Welcome to the January 3, 2024 study session of Livonia City Council. We're going to start with the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by our very own Honorable Council Vice President Martha Taschek.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Vice President. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,984th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, January 17, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. Right now, we do not have any council absences. We have a full crew. Going forward, if you'd like to participate in any of the agenda items that we take up this evening, please approach either podium on either side of the room. That is, when your item is called, then you'll be asked to give your name and location for the record. At this point, I'm going to go to the audience, if there's any audience communication, on any item not on the agenda. You make your way to the podium, sir? You have three minutes. What's your name and address?
My name is Dan Martin with Pershing Investment Group. I'm a non-homestead owner in the city of Livonia. I'd like to pass those pictures along. I want to address the rental licensing ordinance, and I've tried addressing this with the building department. I've owned approximately five different non-homestead properties in Livonia over the past 20 years, and we've participated in the rental licensing program. And I do find it to be beneficial to a landlord because it does allow us to get into the home at least once a year to make sure that it's being maintained. That said, I had some inspections done two weeks ago, and I'm finding that the building department is really overstepping what this ordinance was meant to be. This ordinance originally was meant to be something to do with blight, safety and welfare type of thing for the tenants. When I had my first house inspected, I have two houses now in Livonia. When I had the first one inspected, the guy made his way through the house pretty quickly. The interior of the house is in really good shape, and we were preparing it for a new tenant. When he got to the exterior, the yard's a very clean yard. He walked around the yard, got to the side, backside of the garage, and where we keep our garbage cans, and I had two picnic benches stacked up next to the garbage cans to go out to the trash. Well, he comes into the house, and then he starts threatening me with writing me up for blight for these two picnic benches. And I told him, well, those are garbage. And then he continued to threaten me with a blight violation. And I said, I told you, those are garbage. This went on and on, and he kept questioning me, do you want me to write you up for it? And I finally told him, yeah, write me up for it, because I'll talk to your supervisor. This is ridiculous. And at that point, I pointed out to him the neighboring properties. Now, the neighboring properties next to mine, I've complained about for, on this house, for about a decade, and they look like a bomb went off in the backyard. And these are homesteaded properties. And I've got pictures that'll go around that you can take a look at. There's never any context to the inspector, you know, writing down, boy, we should look at this, or anything like that. He says, I'm here to inspect this property. So we move on to my next property to look at it. He goes through it rather quickly and then decides to write me up because I had peeling paint on the ceiling of an upstairs shower. Now, granted, I want to take care of my properties, and that's a maintenance concern that we should take care of. However, it shouldn't be a violation that keeps me from getting the property licensed. It shouldn't require me-
Sir, that's it. That's time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have you contacted-
Yeah.
So is your information on this paper? Or could, is there a chance that you could email the City Council Office so we could kind of be well-versed in that? CityCouncil@livonia.gov?
Yeah.
If you could do that, that way we can all get a set of eyes on it.
Yeah. I think that there needs to be an advisory for maintenance or a recommendation for maintenance, not a violation that keeps me from getting a license because of something as petty as some flaking paint. I don't believe that's what this was for.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else for audience comment? As Mr. Jolly would say, seen none? I will close audience comment, and I'll move to council announcements. Mr. Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President McCullough, Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to Livonia City Hall. I'd like to first start off and congratulate some of my colleagues that are re-elected to a new term. Councilman Scott Morgan was re-elected, and my two new colleagues, I'm stuck in between them. Martha Taschek, our Vice President, Kira Bezinski, welcome, and looking forward to a good couple of years, and of course, our newly-elected Council President. On December 31, Livonia unfortunately lost a very special citizen, Kathy Glenn, who passed away after a series of health challenges over the past several years. She was a tireless Greenmead volunteer and put together many special events and contributed her time and experience to numerous restoration projects within Greenmead. Kathy served on the Livonia Historical Preservation Commission for 33 years. She was a noted authority on the Historical Preservation Committee and authored a book, Livonia Preserved, Greenmead, and Beyond, with her fellow Commissioner and late Sue Daniels. We extend our sympathies to her husband Roger, their family, and Kathy's many friends throughout our city. The city definitely was a better place with her service and her as a resident. So, Mr. Chair, if it'd be appropriate, we could please have a moment of silence for Mrs. Glenn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Tony?
Thank you. I'd just like to welcome our new members and our re-elected member as well, and wish them all the luck in the world and success in these next two years. And I'd also like to congratulate the University of Michigan football team. And I would also hope that Paul will root them on next Monday in Houston. And enough said about that. Go Blue.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Bezinski?
Hi. Thank you. I would like to invite the public to join me at my first coffee hour next Saturday, January 13, at 11 o'clock at the Livonia Civic Center Library in the Michigan Room. I will be answering questions, talking about, you know, what things will be happening in our city in 2024. I'll be joined by our clerk, Lori Miller, who will be talking about election reforms, our upcoming elections in this coming year, and how folks can volunteer to participate in the process.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, since I like to talk, I've got just a couple items. One, I want to thank my wife for attending this meeting. It's, I think, her first, second that she's been. She's really excited to be here. She gets nervous in front of people. So, thank you, Casey Harper. Good to see you. One note, everybody out there, January 28, Councilmember Donovan and myself will go up against the Red Wings for a third year. Contractually, we're obligated to lose, so you guys can watch us get beat up every time. I think that's the intro that I always give, but it's a great event. We're going to hope for probably 800 spectators, raising good funds for Livonia kids and families. And again, it's, the game's at 11. We moved it up because it is NFC Championship game, and I do have hopes for those Lions to potentially be in there. So, we have their, congratulations to the Lions, along with Blue. And then I also want to thank my colleagues, super excited. 2024 is looking to be an incredible year. We've got a great team here that's here to work for the 93,000-plus citizens, so glad to have everybody on board. And with that, if there's no other audience, our council communications, we're going to jump right into the study agenda. These items, there's going to be no votes taken today. There's going to be motions and resolutions given that will be voted on January 17 meeting, the regular meeting. The first is new business. It was a request to waive the driveway ordinance requirement. I'm not going to go fully into it because we're moving this item to January 17. So, item number one, the petitioner was unable to make it-
29.
Oh.
Oh, no, excuse me. That was, I was wrong.
No, you're good. No, I appreciate it. So, that's going to be moved to January 17, to the study meeting. So, we're going to move to item number two, which is a waiver petition from Planning Commission, petition 2023-11-02-14 submitted by Rental Equipment Solutions, requesting waiver use approval to operate a construction equipment rental business with outdoor storage at 34147 Schoolcraft Road, located on the south side of Schoolcraft Road in Stark in the northeast section of Section 28. Mr. Toramina, can you give us a background?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a new business coming into Livonia, Rental Equipment Solutions on Schoolcraft Road. They are in a building, one-story structure, about 10,000 square feet. The property is just under an acre in size. You can see it's located in an industrial area within the city, surrounded by industrial both to the east, to the west, and to the south, and it's located on I-96 and Schoolcraft Road. So, this is a waiver use, which is a special land use. Special trade contractors are businesses where vehicles, equipment, and materials are not wholly enclosed within a building, and that is the reason why they are treated as a waiver use. Rental Equipment Solution, they rent general construction equipment, including aerial lifts and material handling equipment. This includes scissor lifts, telescopic boom lifts, and forklifts. All of that material would be placed in the rear of the property. The rear is required to be fenced. This is what the property looks like today or previous to Rental Equipment Solutions moving into the site. This is the plan that they presented to the Planning Commission, where it shows where all of the equipment would be located in the back of the property. It would be completely contained within there. There's two gates, both on the east and west sides of the property, that would restrict access to the area. In terms of parking, that is, there are 10 spaces required for this business. The plan shows 18 parking spaces altogether. There's no changes really to the exterior of the building. There's going to be some interior modifications, including some demising walls being added and removed, where they'll have warehousing and storage space, as well as conference areas and general office space. Planning Commission reviewed this a couple of weeks ago and is recommending approval of the petition as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Council?
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Councilwoman Tony?
I'll offer an approving.
Consent or regular?
Consent.
Mr. President.
Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. When I was looking at the, to Mr. Toramina, when I was looking at the building, I don't think there's, I see no issue with it. It's mainly commercialized, industrial area. What does their dumpster enclosure look like? I know that they redid the building, they repainted it outside, but for a number of years, dumpster enclosure, the dumpsters were just sitting out there in the open. There was no actual enclosure. So, I'm trying to wrap my mind around, now that they're asking for this sort of special waiver usage, is there something that allows us to make sure that they construct a dumpster enclosure that would be consistent with the type of material that they have right now? Because when I was looking, I couldn't find one, and I did see on the Google Maps that there was one, if not two, at one point that was just sitting out there, but I'm not sure if they've been changed since with the new occupant.
In this case, as long as the dumpster is in the rear of the property, it would not have to have any additional screening. It's only when it would be visible to the public. I don't see that being an issue. If it's at the rear of the property, that's really the only place it can be located in this case. Our petitioners are here, and I think they would be able to address whether or not they're going to have a dumpster included and how that would be handled. But it was not addressed by the Planning Commission. I don't believe they saw that as an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Matthew Hull. My address is 42130 Trent Drive in Canton, 48188.
Thank you.
And yes, thank you, Mark. Related to the dumpsters, I think what you actually saw was our neighboring property. They still have two dumpsters out there. We personally intend to have an interior garbage collection, and it'll only be exterior for, you know, the purpose of actual disposal on that day. We did include on the plan a dumpster in the event that is kind of in the lower right corner of the screen, if you're looking up there. We did include an optional space if we ended up feeling that we did need a dumpster, where we would then construct the, you know, I don't remember the exact specs that were required, but I want to say it was a cinder block wall, solid gate, similar building material to the existing building.
Well, Mr. President, with that being said, isn't it reasonable to consider that eventually you will get to the point, you're going to generally be doing maintenance on these vehicles and these different rental vehicles you're going to have inside there, so it'd be reasonable that at some point you'll be containing, gathering a lot of trash, right?
A lot of the maintenance is pretty, I don't know how to put this, so there's oil collection, you do oil changes, that goes into a big vat that's inside the building. There's a company that actually comes and will suck that out and take it away. That's something that does not end up, and, sorry, that's not me. So, that's nothing that would end up in a dumpster. A lot of the scrap metal for parts that would come off end up going to scrap yards. So, the items that would end up in the dumpster would be pretty minimal. I don't think we'd end up going the route of ending up needing an exterior dumpster to handle that amount of trash. But again, if we did get to that route, we would definitely build the enclosure to the specifications required.
But just to be clear, you're not going to have loose bags of trash sitting at the curb for-
No, correct, correct, no.
So, who picks up the trash, then?
Who?
Who?
Oh, like a, you know, like a, like one of those 1-800-GOT-JUNK kind of vehicles. It's pretty, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else for the petitioner? Well, we do have a resolution. It's on consent, so you're more than welcome to attend that meeting, but just know it's on the consent agenda.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number three, which is a site plan petition from Planning Commission, petition 2023-11-08-08 submitted by S&amp;Z Restaurants LLC, request an approval of all plans in connection with a proposal to add a second drive-through lane at the Culvers Restaurant at 13030 Middlebelt Road. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you again. This is a request by Culvers to modify the site plan that was approved in 2013. Culvers, as you probably know, is located at Millennium Park off of Millennium Drive. This development includes a restaurant about 4,500 square feet. Its seating is, capacity is for 131 customers. The building is positioned towards the east part of the site, as you can see from the aerial photograph. The drive-up window service is on the east side, and it was approved initially with a single drive-up lane and an adjacent bypass lane, and due to increases in the amount of traffic using the drive-up window, the petitioner approached us about the possibility of adding a second drive-up. To do that, they'll have to make some changes to the, to the, some of the features along the rear of the property. The bypass lane would be eliminated in order to provide enough space for that second drive-through lane. Now, the bypass lane is a requirement, it's a special requirement of a waiver use for drive-up operations. The Planning Commission, in reviewing this, felt that the drive, the bypass lane was not a necessity. They are approving it, however. For council to approve it, because it is a special requirement of a waiver use, it will require a separate resolution in which at least five members of council concur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Council? And is the petitioner here? Would you mind coming out of the podium in case we do have some questions for you? State your name and address.
Andrew Zelke, 4564 O'Curridge Ridge Road, Clarkston, Michigan, 48348.
Thank you. Council?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Tony?
It is a very successful Culvers. I can remember when you opened it, if you're the same owners, I think there were-
Correct.
Two. It is packed. I mean, when you enter in at certain times of the day, obviously, it gets backed up, and then you're waiting for your meals. That concerns me, that property-wise, you have some lanes where they put a number on your car, and you're going around the front of the building, and then they're parking you to the right of the building. They're very expedient, don't get me wrong, but I just wonder if that's going to prohibit any kind of traffic as you add another lane and don't have that bypass lane in there? Help me understand that a little bit.
The only restriction is it's at the ordering point. So, once you get past the ordering point, it frees up on the right side of the building, on the east side. So, as far as congestion goes, you know, we're managing with one drive-through, so either you're stacking the traffic in front of the building, or you're stacking it on the other side of the building. We prefer to stack on the other side of the building, where we've got more room to stack cars and move cars more freely.
And you don't have any extra property over there either, do you?
Just a vacant parcel towards the far west.
To the far west, yeah. Okay, so it's not on that side where you're proposing any, okay.
No.
Appreciate your help on that. Thank you.
Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Toramina, is this request becoming somewhat standard for this type of business? We've seen it with Chick-fil-A recently. I think we've seen it in other places throughout metropolitan Detroit.
I think it is becoming more standard. I think we see double drive-throughs on most restaurants that have any appreciable businesses or business. Some of the smaller independent operations that add drive-throughs, you know, secondarily as part of their operation, they don't, many times they operate with a single drive-through lane, but any, any of the national franchises nowadays come to us with double drive-throughs.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, I was going to offer an approving for consent, but I'll defer to my colleague for-
Thank you. So, we have an approving for consent. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I see no issue with it. I think it's kind of becoming more normalized in the restaurant industry if you have a drive-through.
Yeah, since COVID, it's kind of shifted that way. So, we're probably, used to be like 35, 40% drive-through and 60, 65%, you know, dining. Now, it's flipped around.
Yeah, I just see the restaurant industry gearing with, that have drive-throughs, they're headed in this direction, or they're having double drive-through windows. I understand Councilman Toys questioning. Naturally, want to make sure that we give people option to pull out in the event of emergency or fire trucks to get in and out, but I will note that there are two entrances, one towards the north, one towards the south, that would give people that option to kind of go around the property. My only question is, is there any thought, it looks like the curb, you're going to extend the curb and maybe that island in the middle, the red?
Uh, yes.
The end of that, are you guys going to be conscious of the fact of not, not sticking it out too far, where now people have to make an odd turn to get into that second lane?
I think it's a striped. It's not an island, I don't believe.
An actual island? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it's a striped area, so.
Very good. Awesome. Okay, well, good luck. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
You have an approving on consent, and that will be taken, voted upon on the 17th. You can attend if you want, but it is on consent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any audience communication on that item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next.
There's no Culvers cheeseburgers today?
I know. From my understanding, I don't think I could do that.
We're all on a diet.
I hear you.
January, it's a new year.
I love it.
Well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to item number four, a request to waive the city's formal bidding process and purchase one Dell Power Edge R760 server division of police to replace multiple network servers that are out of warranty and are end of life from budgeted funds. And we have the chief. I'm glad you went with the R760. I was worried you would go with something else.
I am too, Mr. President. Good evening, President McCullough and council members. Yes, this is a request for a new Dell server to replace several old ones. This is a plan for replacement over the years. We budgeted for it last May. Our current servers are also not upgradable. The new server is going to create a better backup system, better security for all our data, which includes jail management, property, evidence, all the important things that we need to keep secure. It's a great new system. It's an upgrade to our older one, and it's necessary. We're also purchasing through government contracting, which saves us time and money for bidding, so we're asking you to waive the formal bidding process. And as I said, it'll be paid for with budgeted funds, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to point out, whenever we put requests to waive the formal bidding process to the millions of viewers out there, that our chief of police and our public safety took the due diligence to find a cooperative purchasing agreement to leverage the most, the best pricing that's on the street. So, it goes a little bit more formal than just waiving that, so I appreciate that. Do I have any motions from council?
Mr. Chair.
Council Vice President Taschek.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent and thank Chief Gralsky for his due diligence here.
You have an approving on consent?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience on this item? All right, seeing none. Moving on to item number five is an award to bid from the Public Works Division for water main repair clamps for the city's 2024 and 2025 calendar years from budgeted funds. Mr. Roraf, how are you?
Well, good evening, council. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Welcome to all the new electeds. Looking forward to working with all of you. As you mentioned, we're before you tonight for water main clamps. We did put out a two-year bid out in December. We had four bidders. We are recommending the second low bidder because the low bidder didn't meet the specs that were submitted. They only submitted a one-year bid. This is pretty much a routine thing that we do every couple of years for water main clamps. We wish we didn't have to come here for any water main clamps, obviously, but unfortunately, that's the life we live. So, therefore, we are requesting council approve the two-year water main clamp contract to Ferguson Water Works in the amount not to exceed $100,000 annually for the 2024, 2025 years from funds budgeted in the Water and Sewer Fund, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through the chair, I'd like to offer approving on consent.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. No questions on the clamps?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? All right, seeing none? You are approved, sir. We will move on to item number six, which is a request to approve a two-year extension with Eganix Incorporated, Department of Public Works, for the fats, oils, and grease fog prevention treatment through December 31, 2025. Mr. Roraf?
Thank you. As you mentioned, Eganix extension here. In February of 2022, council approved the original contract with Eganix for our fog treatment program that included the option for a two-year extension. We've identified over 250 businesses that will need to be inspected in this fog program. We've been in contact with over 50 of those businesses up to date as of now. After the two years of working with Eganix, we have seen a reduction in the amount of fog we have to clean and maintain in our sewers, and we are definitely looking forward to taking advantage of the pricing and the two-year extension being offered with a no-price increase. It is the recommendation of the department that council award a two-year extension to Eganix, Inc., for an annual amount not to exceed 80,000 from budgeted funds to continue the fog treatment program.
Thank you, Mr. Roraf. Do I have direction from council? Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, Mr. Roraf, could you explain to us exactly what that is? I know you've explained it to us once before, I do believe, but just for the audience, exactly what this fog is doing and what's the process here?
Sure.
And why we need this?
Absolutely. So, a lot, a lot of the businesses that we're looking at is obviously anybody that's pushing grease, any fogs, oils, or greases out into our sewers, our main sewers. So, a lot of the times what's falling under is a lot of the businesses are restaurants that we go to, and when, and in this process and in this treatment program, we actually sit down, hand out informational, educational pamphlets with them. We, we've already identified a bunch of the, what we would consider, you know, potential problem businesses that may be contaminating or sending too much grease down through their sewer leads into our sewers. So, we will educate them. We actually take samples. If they're over the recommended allowance for those, we'll go back to them, work with them on cleaning out their grease interceptors or their traps, and educating them on, you know, maybe you do have a maintenance record that you have, a company coming out quarterly to clean your grease interceptors, but maybe it needs to be monthly. So, this program is identifying and getting out there to help educate the businesses and in the, in the community to, you know, do what they're supposed to be doing to prevent sewer backups. We've had a few instances where we've had, you know, fairly large sewer pipes on the city side that are, you know, 70% clogged with grease. So as we back up and we go and identify that, we start to identify this. The Egonix program, they're, they're working with them to be able to put emulsifiers and different things of that nature in there to help correct those problems as we move forward as well.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. I'll offer an approving on consent.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Roraf, for the description. Any more, council? Nothing, seeing none, you have an approving on consent?
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience on this matter? Moving on. We're going to item number seven, which is an award of contract from the Department of Public Works Sewer Division for sanitary sewer flow monitoring and rain gauge program for a period of five years from budgeted funds. Mr. Roraf?
Thank you. Since two thousand seven, the department has contracted services to maintain sewer flow meters, pipe level sensors, and rain gauges. These monitoring devices help serve as a checks and balance, for one thing, on billing that we receive from Great Lakes Water Authority, from Wayne County, on any of the master meters that we're billed through. These meters also serve as a basis for determining volumes flowing through the sewers, allowing the department to analyze and project future, future system needs. ADS has been our current contractor. They have the equipment and the programs that will tie in with our current SCADA system, which was just brought to council in the last month or two, allowing us to be able to check for rain gauges, and the programs that they have will tie into the current SCADA, allowing us to check those gauges, the alarms, and the one great thing about us is that will be allow, allow us to monitor those remotely from either a phone or a desktop as we're there, so we don't actually have to pop sewer lids and those type of things. The previous contract, five-year contract expired in July. We put a bid out on Mitten, three companies submitted bids, and ADS Environmental Services being the low bidder, it is the recommendation of the department that council award a five-year contract to ADS Environmental Services to maintain the city's network of sewer flow monitors and rain gauges, providing all the necessary maintenance, data processing, web-based data management, and alarming. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President?
Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President, thanks, Mr. Roraf, hope you had a happy new year. With the SCADA system that we approved and ADS, the other two, I know you said they, they link together, they essentially work together. In the event five years from now, we go off a bid again, is ADS the only company that's capable of linking with our system, or these other companies, they can link with the system as well?
No, they're, they're capable to link with multiple companies. The, the current meters and the system that we have links with them, and as it came through, they've been good to work with and their equipment's been really good to have, so being able to link those two together, I think we're, we're really moving in the, in the right direction.
And doing this helps us be preventative with our maintenance, which would potentially save the city millions of dollars over the next decade or so, right?
That's the goal.
Awesome, all right, I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Donovan, any other, anything else from council? Mr. Roraf, thank you to your team for the asset management, I know SCADA is going to help out you, it's just a good direction, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any questions or concerns from the, from the audience on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to item number eight, which is a request to waive the city's formal bidding process and approve an animal sheltering agreement between the City of Livonia and the Michigan Humane Society. This is from the Department of Public Works Animal Control Division, from a period of January first, two thousand twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, with a five percent boarding slash holding fee increased to six thousand and twelve dollars and fifty-six cents per month. Mr. Roraf?
Thank you. Again, this is a request, it's a one-year contract for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-four. Just as a little background information, the cost increase for this new contract, as you mentioned, was a five percent increase from two thousand twenty-three. Most of the other costs that will affect the city will be very marginal or not at all. Those services are not a high priority or really used by our ACOs. These services would be at the city's request if they were to be activated. These include wildlife charges, staff training charges, operational or evaluational services, and any ancillary services like court testifying or hoarding cases, those type of things. So for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-three, we took four hundred and eighty domestic animals to the Humane Society. Hundred and thirteen of those were returned to their owners, and there was an additional one hundred and thirteen that were just wildlife that showed up at Humane Society from Livonia. The Westland Michigan Humane continues to be our current best course of action for the city. Other shelters increase staff costs due to location, service charges, and their relationship with other communities, including their own. And I know we were here probably the middle of last year, talked about this, to extend the six months. We have followed up with other communities and other businesses to try to see if there was an alternative. I can tell you that we've talked to Taylor, they're, they're in the process of building a new animal shelter. We've talked with Southfield, they're not quite ready to go live with anything over there in a partnership. We've talked to, here on Township. So we, we are trying to see if there's any alternatives to, you know, just to have options, but at this current time, the department is asking council to approve the two thousand twenty-four contract with the Humane Society, as you mentioned, for an amount of seventy-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Toy?
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Roraf. Mr. Roraf, I remember last year when we did the six months. Have we thought about going any longer than the year, or is it Humane Society desired not to, or Paul Shaker said yes?
Yeah, the, the one year, as we're starting to find with a lot of contracts that we deal with, they, they just won't entertain.
They won't, okay.
Anything beyond that, because the, they have no, no way to control the cost that they're having to pay.
Oh, I see, okay. And we've, we've had good luck with the Humane Society, haven't we? I mean, for the most part?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And, you know, what is it, the clerk's office offers the licensing or the tags for the dogs and parrots and, no, you don't do parrots, do you?
Dogs and cats.
Just dog and cats, that's it, but let the word go out, get, get parrots, yeah, no parrots. You know, and that's helpful for us, if they're registered or chipped or whatever.
Absolutely.
These poor little animals that just go unwanted, you got four hundred and eighty, only one hundred and thirteen returned and a bunch of wild other ones, so appreciate all your work on that. And I'm going to offer an approving, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair, on, I guess, consent.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy, Councilman Donovan, or Councilman Jolly, you've done it to me.
It's not as easy as it looks.
Listen.
Don, you know, this is one of these things where I think all parties involved, the City of Livonia, people in your department, the council, the Michigan Humane folks, everybody wants to do the best they can for the animals here, right? And this has received more attention than you would normally think, but I think that that's a good thing. I know that you and some of your direct reports have worked diligently in regards to exploring other options. I will note that I think this contract, even though it does have a price increase, it's not a shocking price increase. It's something in line with what would be expected and something that would be reasonable by any logical way of looking at a contract, particularly in this world of inflation that we're looking at. So I'm not as concerned with this at the moment as I have been in the past, just because in the past we had seen some of those double-digit percentage increases come out of nowhere, seemingly anyways.
Agreed.
So I want to thank you and your people. I think it's always good to continue to monitor the landscape and do a programmatic review of what communities are doing out there, but this is not something that troubles me at this point, so thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anything else from council? Thank you, Mr. Roraf.
Thank you.
You don't have the next item, do you?
I hope not.
Well, thank you.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Any audience comment on this item? Seeing none, and Mr. Jolly, I got to say that I'm using all of your, your taglines, even the seeing none, I'm, I'm kind of jumping into this, so.
You know, the sad thing is you think that I created those.
They're just getting recycled.
You're here long enough and everybody says the same stuff, so.
All right, well, we're moving on to item number nine, which is a request to amend the engineering contract through the qualification-based selection, the QBS process, with OHM advisors for the design engineering services for the two thousand twenty-four water main replacement project. This is from the engineering division. Mr. Zelinski?
Good evening, President McCullough and city council members. As you know, we want to protect our aging infrastructure. As you heard before, Don had to get some clamps to obviously keep us in line for any water main breaks that have occurred. So we're looking to utilize OHM advisors, we have Jessica Katers out in the audience. She's worked with us in the past on dwarf projects. This one, unfortunately, we're not able to get dwarf funding, drinking water revolving funding, so we're looking at bonding the project through the city like we did last year when we sold ten million dollars and, or, I'm sorry, eight to nine, or six million and bond, six and a half. With that, we're looking at several locations and then replacing three point four miles of water main, basically six and eight inch and some twelve inch. Any water mains that are six inch will upgrade to eight inch, and again, there's a map that shows the different locations. Our goal is to get going on the design. Obviously, Eagle's taking four to six months on the approvals for the water main permits, we want to get that going now, and looking for your recommendation to improve five point five million dollars worth of water main, and asking for your approval for three hundred and thirty-one thousand in design cost based on the QBS contract of six percent on that construction amount. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those, and obviously we have Jessica Katers in the audience to assist. But again, looking forward to improving our infrastructure and keeping our residents quality water, fire protection, and again, doing it hopefully during the construction season of April to November.
Thank you, Mr. Zelinski. Councilmember Donovan?
Thanks, Council President. Thanks to the engineering department, we talked about these five point five million-dollar water main replacement projects. You guys work really hard on this, and especially with aging infrastructure and these bigger rainfalls, this is something really important for us to get out in front of, and I think engineering does a really good job, partially because you're probably the smartest engineer in the world, but OHM does a really good job, we've had a longstanding relationship with OHM, and they do a really great job, and they have some seventy different municipalities they work with, so I think they have the experience and know how we want things done, so I think this is a good idea for Livonia to do this again with them. I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
Do you mind if we leave that on regular, just the amount? Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Zelinski, you have an approving on regular, does anybody else on council have anything? Audience? Okay, moving on to our last item, which is number ten, is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law, Title Three, Chapter Four, Financial Procedures, Section two hundred, to add per diem language. Mr. Bernier?
Yeah, excuse me, good evening. Mike Slater came to me end of last year about this. We didn't have anything standardized for when we were sending people, whether it was elected officials or employees, to seminars on how much they would be paid for the per diem and how, and it wasn't consistent within departments. So we wanted to have consistencies with the police department, DPW, and everyone else, and actually know how much it was going to pay, so we wouldn't have to go through it. The, it is set up, the system is set up that we mimic what the GSA allows for this area for the per diem for the meals, and that's basically it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Paul?
Yes, sir.
So when this, so I think per diem, it's, it goes to pay for the, the expenses that you just indicated.
Just meals.
Just meals?
Right, this is the per diem for meals when they're traveling.
Right, so is this a flat amount that is given to them, or can they charge against this for a reimbursement?
No, it's, it's a per diem, we give them the flat amount, quite frankly, we're not